Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you for watching. We will call the meeting to order. And Councilwoman Blaylock, can I ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And the invocation.
Okay. I don't want to make him that. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today. Give us the wisdom to move forward in unison and make the best decisions we can for our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start this evening with three public hearings. We'll do the first public hearing. Mr. Eads.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. This is a public hearing to receive citizen comments on the potential closing of a portion of the street end or the street end at northeast 54th Street. This proposed street closing is a product of a negotiated settlement over a longstanding disagreement between the town and who has what rights at that street end. Upon the street closure, the Dutchman Creek Villas Homeowners Association would convey to the town two single-family residential lots, which we anticipate to be roughly worth $500,000. If we were wanted to market the lots, the initial plan is to use those areas as a parking lot to the adjacent boat ramp. In that particular street end, there has been a fence erected at the end of the street, so the public has not been accessing the water through that street end pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-299. We're following that procedure. The first procedure is what we did on February 8th, which was to adopt a resolution of intent to close the street. We then advertised a notice of tonight's hearing for four consecutive weeks in the paper. We sent certified mail to the adjacent property owners, and we also posted signs in the area. Of note, the property owners on both sides of that street end is the association. The findings required would be, one, that's not detrimental to the public interest, and two, that we're not denying, and I'm summarizing here, not denying means of reasonable ingress and egress to people in that area. So with that as the backdrop, unless the counsel has any questions of me, I suggest we open the public hearing for citizen comment.
One question, Counselor. It's one we've asked many times, and you've answered many times. Does this create a precedent?
No, sir. I would say, in particular, the history of this particular street end is very unique. There's been, and I don't want to, I believe some members of the association in the audience, I don't want to pick at any old source, but there's been a disagreement as to who had what responsibilities in that street end for quite some time, including post-storm bulkhead repair. This proposed settlement would resolve all of those issues and, again, enhance the existing public facility, the boat ramp that's not at issue. And the town would acquire roughly half a million dollars in assets by way of the two single-family residential lots. There's some other minute details, but one of them would be, or is, that we'll be getting a easement to repair and maintain the utilities in that street end. One other benefit to the public would be that area, once the street is closed, divest to the adjacent property owners. It's all the same property owner, so our tax base would grow by the value of that street end.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Madam Mayor, unless there's any other questions of counsel at this time, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing for public comment.
No, the public hearing first.
Yes.
Right.
Madam Clerk?
I do not have anybody signed up for this public hearing.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this matter? Madam Clerk, let the record reflect, no one has indicated they'd like to speak.
Counsel, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing, pass. Or all in favor, I'm sorry. Thank you. And counsel, is there discussion? So there's a resolution in the packets. Can we have a motion to pass the resolution?
I make a motion, we pass the resolution, according to Counselor Eads' direction.
All in favor? Or is it second?
I'll second it.
Second, thank you. All in favor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel.
Done, ma'am.
We'll get the resolution executed and the other procedural steps we need to take, get with the association, and consummate the settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Public hearing two, action.
I need to ask to be recused from this based on being a relative.
I'll make a motion to recuse Councilwoman Dell.
Second.
All in favor? Done, moved. Thank you. Mr. Eads.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor and Counsel, this next item is an application for a special use permit. This is different than the public hearing we just had. This will be a quasi-judicial hearing. We're going to conduct it in a manner to ensure the applicants and all those who have standing to testify substantive and procedural due process to that end. All witnesses must be sworn in, and they will be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and all those interested parties on this particular application have a right to an impartial decision-maker that bases his or her vote solely on the competent evidence adduced during this hearing. I need to ask each of you, or all of you as a group, a few questions to ensure we have an impartial decision-making body. Again, Councilmember Bell has been recused, so this is, she won't be participating in this, so I'll ask everyone else. Do any of the non-recused council members have a financial interest in the subject matter of this application? Madam Clerk, please note a negative response. Has any of the non-recused council members had any ex parte discussions with the applicant about this application? And by ex parte, I mean discussions about the application outside the context of this hearing. Negative, Madam Clerk. Has anyone made a site visit to the site of this, subject matter of this application for purposes of assessing this application? Madam Clerk, negative. Other than Councilmember Bell, who's been recused, does anyone have a close or familiar relationship with the applicant, and I believe the principal of the applicant is Mr. Matthew Mansfield? Anyone have a close relationship?
No.
Can you think of any reason, whether I've asked you or not, why you cannot have an open mind and base your vote tonight solely on the competent evidence adduced during the hearing? Can everyone have an open mind?
Yes.
As I stated earlier, we will have the witnesses sworn in. They'll be subject to cross. It is the applicant's burden to prove through competent evidence, competent substantial material evidence, the criteria that can be found on page 13 of the agenda packet. Pretty lengthy, so I'm not going to read it all. I suggest we proceed in the following manner. We'll have staff, I believe through Mr. Edwards, introduce the item. He'll be subject to cross-examination, subject to questions from the board. Then we'll proceed to the applicant, same process, subject to cross-examination, subject to questions from the board, and then we will proceed to hear from any other party who has standing. So unless there's any questions from the counsel, I would ask all those who wish to provide testimony during this hearing to come forward and be sworn in.
I swear that the evidence you give to counsel during this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Mr. Edwards?
Eads, Mayor, council members. The special use permit that's before you this evening is for a heat and air business with open storage. Mr. Mansfield has purchased the office building that was adjacent to his current business of operation, and he's expanding that business over into the adjacent building. And he's proposing to have a container that will be placed in the, behind the back of the building where his recycled heat and air systems will be stored until they get picked up and recycled. He has a contract with a recycling company that will take and put a large container in there that will be used to store the equipment, and then when it gets filled up at a regular basis or on a needed basis, they'll come and pull the dumpster out and replace it with a new one. This is, the neighbors have been notified, property has been posted, and it's been advertised.
Mansfield, do you wish to ask Mr. Edwards any questions? Mr. Edwards, by my count, pages nine through 18 of the agenda packet are the agenda materials related to this application. Would you like to offer that in evidence as Exhibit 1?
I would.
Mr. Mansfield, do you have any objections to that agenda packet coming in evidence? Madam Mayor, we'll receive that as Exhibit 1, pages nine through 18 of the agenda packet, without objection. Mr. Edwards, has staff looked at this application as compared to the S U P criteria?
Yes, we have.
Staff formed an opinion as to whether the application meets that criteria?
The application does show that his proposed location of the recyclable container, the fencing, the OPEC fencing, meets the standards for the supplemental standards.
All of them?
Yes.
Any questions from the counsel?
I have several, thank you, Counselor. So the storage unit itself, is it covered?
No, sir. Well, I don't want to answer that on behalf, you know, I don't believe it is.
Counselor, I reserve my questions for the owner, who apparently has the knowledge to answer these questions.
Any other questions of Mr. Edwards?
I have one, but it may roll over to the applicant as well. We have descriptions of screenings and coverings, but do we have renderings of any such?
No, sir.
One question, Mr. Edwards. This S U P is for the purpose of relocating the existing storage, so the existing storage is going to be relocated as is.
Well, yes. But the existing conditions were, they didn't have the fencing in, and I don't think they had the container back there like they'll have on this one. In addition, based off of the applicant's narrative, he said that they had to, in the past, break down each of the units to separate the recyclable portions of the AC unit. This new process will actually be a one unit, no breaking it down. It'll be a cleaner. Currently, the other facilities that he has is not fenced in, it's not screened, so it is bringing it into compliance, actually, with the special use permit.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mansfield, do you have any questions to Mr. Edwards based on his answers to the board's questions?
No.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Edwards. We may call you back up. Mr. Mansfield?
I mean, I guess I just opened up to questions. I mean, Mr. Edwards did a pretty good job explaining. This is basically a metal, big metal container that I want to use to put our old AC units that we take out of houses, put it in there. Metal company comes and picks it up, replaces it with an empty one. Reason why I want to put it on this new property is, we really, where we're at now, we really don't have a space for it as is. It makes a huge mess having to break down the units. I mean, when you break down the units, you got to separate all the different metals. You end up with two different types of copper, several different metals, different coil types, and so you end up with like six, seven different stacks of just a bunch of metal everywhere. And it is very, because of that, it takes a lot of space. Space we don't have, and as our growth has gotten worse, so this new process should condense it down, make it much cleaner, and look a lot better, be more efficient. We can do this over at the new building, obviously. I'm pretty sure we'd be allowed to do that, but in my opinion, if I can get this approved at this new location, which is right beside our old location, I won't have to take it to the new building and keep the new building, you know, that's one less thing I have to bring over there. Where this is at, you can't see it unless you drive down the street, then you would see it, but once the fence is done, you won't see it at all. You see the fence. The fence is tall enough to cover the height of the bin, and it goes all the way around all locations of it. Only way you could see it is if you opened the gate and got in there.
So your submission, I mean, clearly demonstrates the logic, the persuasive logic, from a business point of view. I understand what you're trying to do, and you will be more efficient and cleaner and all of that. I have some just simple questions. So we learned that the storage unit itself is not covered, it's open. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct. What kind of security do you have? Do you have a video? Do you have the fence locked? How secure is this material going to be? Because I assume it's worth some money, right?
I mean, it's scrap metal. I mean, it's not worth, if somebody, it's not worth anything to me. Honestly, I'd give it away. If somebody would come take it off my hands, it'd be great.
Okay, but you're going to have some kind of security. You're going to lock it, right?
The gate, the gate, yeah, will be locked.
Okay. What's the storage capacity that you're anticipating with the container?
The container, you know, we can fit like a 20-foot container in there by, like, eight feet deep. It's like six feet tall, so we'll be able to hold quite a few units in there before it needs to be hauled off.
Okay. And I noticed that you made the statement that it's not going to be a public nuisance to adjoining properties, and I would agree if it's fenced and locked. I guess my other question would be, this is a relatively new process. What happens if you reach an overflow situation, or the vendor who's picking up the material is delayed? Then what?
Well, we do have space in that, within that fenced area, actually, for technically two containers. We're only going to put one in there, so if it does happen to overflow or we have to wait a few days and the bin is full, we'll have space within the fenced area to stack the additional units.
Okay, so you have a backup plan. That was the point.
Yeah, and we could always put them back where we've been putting them as well.
How frequently will the pickups occur?
I mean, that just depends on, you know, the season, how busy we are. You know, obviously, in the summertime, I'd imagine to be pretty frequent, maybe twice a month or so. In the wintertime, maybe once a month.
Okay, I'm just thinking about the neighbors who might be affected by the, I assume it's a relatively large vehicle that's going to come and pick this up, right?
Yeah, it'll be a bin, just like you would see, similar to, you know, on a construction site, you know, a metal, metal container.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
It's going to be fenced, the gate's going to be locked. For the most part, it's going to be out of sight. With all the government regulations, is there OSHA or EPA requirements that you have to meet or compliance?
The nice thing about this is, actually, it takes a lot of that stuff off of us and onto the metal company, actually, that's picking it up. All the units will be, you know, at their site. You know, we're not breaking them down anymore. They'll be breaking them down.
So you're just going to be storing junk until it's removed, for the most part?
Correct.
So back to the eight-foot black metal fence. As I asked earlier, we have a description, but we have no rendering. Can you describe the construction of this metal fence? Is it chain-linked with slats? Is it slotted panels that are going to be painted? What's the, what's the material other than just eight-foot black metal fence that are here?
It's chain-linked with the black little slots in there. I don't know what you call that, but...
Yeah, I know what you're, yeah, the plastic slots that go feed down through the chain link fence. So there could be some visibility through the fencing?
Could be a little bit, maybe, yeah.
And it's three, a three-sided fence? Because you're attaching it to the...
To the building, yeah.
To the building.
Further questions? Staff, Steve, would you cross-examination? Mr. Mansfield, is there anything else you'd like to offer, sir?
No.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, I only saw two people get sworn in, so I'm assuming there's no one else, but does anyone else want to provide testimony in this hearing? Madam Clerk, if you'll let the record reflect, that no one indicated they wanted to speak. Before we close the hearing, I just want to inventory the evidence. We first heard from Steve Edwards, who introduced the item on behalf of staff. We received into evidence Exhibit 1, which consisted of pages nine through 18 of the agenda packet, the agenda packet related to this application. Mr. Edwards was not cross-examination. The applicant declined to cross-examine him. Mr. Edwards did answer questions from counsel. We then heard from the applicant, Mr. Matthew Mansfield, on behalf of Mansfield Property Holdings LLC, I think I got that right. He was not, Mr. Edwards declined to cross-examine him, but he did answer questions from counsel. Mr. Mansfield, where'd he go?
He's in the back.
Do you have anything you want to add to my inventory of that evidence, sir?
No.
Okay. Madam Mayor, at this time, it would be appropriate to close the evidentiary portion of this hearing and begin deliberations.
Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
No, moved.
Second?
Second.
Madam Mayor, again, you can find the criteria in counsel on page 13 in the agenda packet. It's my duty to inform you, under North Carolina law, with respect to special use permits, if the applicant comes forward with substantial incompetent material evidence to meet the criteria, and that evidence is not controverted, it would be our duty to issue the S U P. You can, however, append reasonable conditions to the issuance, but those conditions must be related to the criteria.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed special use permit and to adopt the associated findings of fact.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Staff will draw up that S U P and have it executed and issued to Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Public hearing three, please.
Ma'am, again, this is a special use permit application. I believe the applicant, Poseidon Place LLC, is represented by a counsel, a colleague of mine here from Brunswick County, Mr. Greg Cleaver. Is that correct? Mr. Cleaver, you heard the opening portion of the prior S U P. Would you be willing to stipulate that this hearing will be governed by those same tenants, so we don't have to go through all that again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will ask, does anyone have a financial interest in the subject matter of this application? Negative. Does anyone, has anyone had any ex parte discussions with the applicant or staff about the subject matter of this application? Madam Clerk, negative. Has anyone made a site visit to the site for the purposes of assessing this application? Again, negative, Madam Clerk. Does anyone have a close or familiar relationship with the applicant or any principles of the applicant? your mind up and you're not going to base your vote on the competent material and substantial evidence adduced during this hearing? Again, Madam Clerk, negative. We'll go in the same order. All those who wish to provide testimony, please come forward and be sworn in. Mr. Cleaver, as an officer of the court, I don't believe you need to be, I think you're always under a, subject to Rule 11. All right, Mr. Edwards, if you'd introduce this item for us.
Mayor, council members, the special use permit before you this evening is for a single-family welling large home. Our ordinance requires that any homes that have a square, heated square footage of 4,000 square feet up to 5,000 square feet must be approved by special use permit. The applicant has provided you with the site plan, the survey, a rendering of the property, of the home, and its total heated square footage, let me get to my notes here, I apologize, is being proposed is 4,975 square feet. Therefore, that's why it's before you today. It's over the, it meets the criteria for the large home requirements to be issued a special use permit. The property is located in the, what's called the Point. That's down at the far end of the island on the beachfront, the Kings Lynn, more commonly known. There was three subdivisions done in phases. There was Phase 1 Kings Lynn, Phase 2 Kings Lynn at the harbor, and then the last one was the Point. In the Point subdivision, there are six lots that were developed, and there are four homes in that area now that have been built, leaving two undeveloped lots, and this will be the fifth home, which is leaving one undeveloped lot. All the homes within that subdivision, the Point, is over 4,000 square feet, and that's, and it's in the area where the lot size has to be 13,000 square feet in the building area, so it meets that standard as well for the lot square footage requirement. It's got the extra wide driveway being proposed. It's meeting the 10-foot side, George setbacks. So lighting is one of the standards that's required as well, and that always gets looked at during permitting as well, so what's, you know, we'll ensure compliance with that at the permitting stage. They are looking at screening the recyclable and garbage containers up underneath the And of course, all that gets verified, again, at the development phase of the permitting process. The driveway width has to be 12 feet because it has, it's required to have more than six parking spaces. The property is proposed in a R7 zoning district, which is allowed for medium-density residential district, single-family and two-family, if it has the lot width and an area that's required for a two-family. Water and sewer is available down at that end. And that's pretty much it.
Edwards, pages nine through 46 of the agenda packet pertain to this application. Would you like to introduce that into evidence as Exhibit?
Yes, sir.
Good night. Nineteen, I'm sorry, I thought I said nineteen. Nineteen through forty-six. Mr. Cleaver, do you have any objections? Madam Mayor and counsel are receiving to evidence as Exhibit One, pages nineteen through forty-six of the Agenda Packet as it relates to this application. Mr. Cleaver, do you have any cross-examination? Mr. Edwards, has staff looked at this application as it relates to the criteria to issue a special use permit?
Yes, sir.
Did staff find any deviation from that criteria as far as?
No, sir.
Like you were saying setbacks?
No, sir. It met all the supplementary standards that are required. And I failed to say that the property was posted, advertised, and the neighbors were notified as well.
Counsel, any questions to Mr. Edwards?
So, um, Steve, if I may, from, from an impact point of view, have we looked at the additional demands which were placed on our sewer system? Potentially by...
That was discussed with staff and their efficient sewer for the property.
We do have an impact study, we know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the impact study.
I mean, do we have data?
No.
Twelve bedrooms, two people per bedroom, you could have twenty-four people there on any given night.
No, I don't, an impact study was not provided.
Okay, what about traffic and parking impact?
That was not provided either.
Okay. What about emergency access?
It's...
Non-problematic, right?
Right.
Firepeople have cleared it?
Yes, I mean, they, they have approved that subdivision. It was part of the approval when it was originally done.
And trash? Same question, we've looked at that?
Yes, that's, one of the things they have to do is provide screening and placement of the containers out of sight.
Are there any other residences in that area that are this large?
I did a, uh, I went from Sixth to Ninth Place West and looked at all the houses on the oceanfront and on Kings Lynn Drive. There's a total of thirty-four houses in that area. Out of that thirty-four houses, they're twenty-three and a half percent are over four thousand square feet. The majority of the homes range between three thousand and thirty-five hundred square feet at ten houses at twenty-nine point four-one percent. The next twenty-five hundred to three thousand square foot homes ranged within the twenty, twenty-three point five-three percent. And from two thousand to twenty-five hundred, it's like fourteen and a half percent. And then ones that were thirty-five hundred to four thousand, there was three percent. So you've got, that area does have large homes in that area at almost twenty-five percent.
Steve, interesting data. Do we have dates associated with those percentages? These super-large homes, when were they built? And did they require S U Ps?
This would've been pre the ordinance.
Uh-huh, I see. But do we know?
I can get that data. I did not, I just looked at the square footage.
It would be informative, because it's one thing to say they're there, but they're, they were there with different standards or no standards, and we're in a different place now, correct?
Well, the, the, yes. So all the large homes that, that are there were pre the ordinance changed to mandate no homes greater than four thousand to five thousand square feet without it. Most of the homes down there that are the large homes have been built more recently. The Point subdivision was approved in two thousand and three or two thousand and four. Uh, I think that's, it was approved in two thousand and three. So the four homes that have been constructed, all four of them were built before the ordinance changed.
Right, that's, thank you. That was my point, that...
Right.
The earlier development was unguided by this kind of an ordinance that limited size, and now we're in a different place.
Yes, sir.
Literally, no pun intended, thank you.
Mr. Edwards, in the renderings on page forty-one, it shows the dimensions for Lot Number Six, which I assume is the lot we're talking about here. And then it has blank, Lot Number One, Two, Three, Four, and Five.
Right.
Is Lot One, Two, Three, Four, and Five, is four of those lots also what we call big house?
Yes.
So the ones right next to it are what we call big house?
Yeah, the one, the one right next door to it is actually the larger of the four homes that are in there, and it's, um, it was, I have it in here somewhere, forty-two, fifty-two hundred square feet. I think it was actually in the applicant's notes there. But I think it was like fifty-two hundred square feet in that home.
Martin, or Charlie, do you have any comments?
Steve, in your opinion, well, in my opinion, we lost one of the greatest natural resources we had when we lost the point. Having said that, has that boat already sailed? There's no, there's no going back. In other words, with this piece of property, we couldn't change the rules to... Is that correct?
That's correct, Stephen.
Thank you.
Steve, on page forty-two, which I think entered into evidence already, counselor?
Yes, sir.
Appears to be a retaining wall. What's the, what are the dimensions of that wall? Since we've, we've had some famous discussions about walls.
Right. Right, it doesn't have a dimension there, so I'm not sure. And it looks like it's actually on the adjoining property side.
I read it to be eight-foot high, but I can't discern how...
You say you're on page forty-two?
I'm on forty-two.
I may not have the same number in it to do.
It's, the retaining wall is marked on it.
Steve. Mr. Cleaver, do you have a copy of the agenda?
Okay, I can't, I can't see that on that one.
And for the minutes, Madam Clerk, this is just an enlarged copy of the same page numbers that are in the bound Agenda Packet.
Okay, I see it, yeah. Cause your top of retaining wall is eight point four, maybe? Plus or minus?
I'm reading. It's eight point four.
Need a bigger table.
All right, yeah, so the retaining wall that's being shown on there says it's eight point four to the top of the wall. And again, I think that's on the, uh, the adjoining property, existing home.
Can we verify that?
But that, I'm thinking that eight point five is, is elevation height and not the, not the ground, not, it's not eight foot tall, it's eight feet above sea level, is I think what he's indicating there.
Well, given the previous issues we've had with walls that are erected, what's the standard that has to be met?
The new standard is they can't have a retaining wall greater than six feet in height, no.
Greater than what?
Six feet in height. Now, these are, I wanna say these are elevation heights here and not how tall the wall is.
Okay, how tall is the wall? That's the question.
I do not know that. I might be able to find a spot elevation.
But it can't be more than six foot? Is that what you're saying?
Above, above grade. Well, the, the, if it's an old wall, it, it may have been. I don't think that wall is that tall down there. It was just more for stabilization. I'm seeing contour lines of five and six feet right through there. So on the proposed site, that wall's only gonna be roughly three feet above the grade.
So the wall's already there?
The wall's already there. That, that wall, if you look at it, it's on the adjoining property. It's not a proposed wall.
Can we verify that?
Yes, I see it.
I see where it appears to be the case.
I see the arrows there.
Probably go to Google Maps and verify.
The top of the wall is eight point four plus or minus feet.
Well, I couldn't...
I see that longer wall is on the adjoining property, but there appears to be a wall on the property in question.
I wanna say that, that the little squiggly lines is saying top of wall on the, page forty-two, I accepted in the application, but I had him provide a, another rendering because he didn't have the wrong setback shown on here. And I, and if you look at page forty-three, you'll, you'll see that the retaining wall is definitely identified on the second Lot Five, the adjacent property. And I'm not seeing any proposed retaining walls on the structure being, being, seeking the special use permit. I think forty-two is confusing because he wrote top of wall, eight point four feet, retaining wall on top of the site plan. I think that's where the confusion comes in.
Mr. Martin, do you have any questions?
I do. I have one question, cause all my other questions were answered already, so thanks, everyone, for that. But I, I wanna go back to something that Councilmember Bock brought up. I think he referred to traffic and parking from just a general impact study. I specifically wanna focus in on the parking allotment for this property itself. And of course, I wasn't able to reach out to you prior to this. I was under the impression within our ordinances that for an inhabitable room, a parking space had to be identified or designated on the property for each inhabitable room in a, in a dwelling. Is that, am I correct in that saying?
The, the ordinance reads that for every, this is, every two habit, let's see, it starts, basically, count up your habitable rooms and subtract one. So if you've got fifteen habitable rooms, which include bedrooms, living rooms, dens, office, gyms, media rooms, whatever they wanna call it, other than something utilitarian like kitchens and a dining area or laundry room, but any habitable room gets counted. So if you've got fifteen habitable rooms, by our ordinance, you've gotta provide fourteen parking spaces.
So with that calculation, the rendering on page thirty-seven only shows us seven parking spaces, and there's surely more than eight inhabitable rooms in this floor plan. I see where we possibly could squeeze in two more parking spaces and go to nine?
If you look at, uh, page forty-three, you'll see that he has identified one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen parking spaces. And that's just underneath the house. He can actually count the driveway as more parking spaces because we will allow head-in parking to, to count. So he, he...
I may have to get my magnifying glass out to find these, yeah.
Well, the applicant's, the, the, that's part of the ordinance that he has to meet for the number of habitable rooms. For the special use permit, it just says that one of the supplementary standards is that if he has more than six spaces, then he has to provide a twelve-foot wide driveway, and he meets that supplemental standard.
Yes.
The, the number, these other ordinances will, will be triggered based off of the permit applications.
But on page thirty-seven of the rendering, it shows seven, parking for seven cars. At a mistake, or is that...
I, I think they were just, I'm, I'm... I think they was doing it for illustration.
Well, for illustration, where else would the cars be able to be put?
Well, on, on the, if we hold the, the way it's written here, on the, you can get another car there. Here, you can get some cars in here, here, because this car had to drive in some way, so you can get cars here. There's, there's plenty of room for more cars. I assure you that the parking will be correct if the special use permit is issued.
What concerns... I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that, that, that is part of the standard permitting process, is that they have to meet the parking requirements. And if they don't, then we don't issue the permit, or they reduce the size, the number of rooms that they have.
What concerns me is there are homes of, um, some magnitude and any number of bedrooms that show a pattern for taking access parking spaces and also park in the right-of-way. And the one recent event was not an exception. So I'm, I have that concern about parking, cause that's a safety issue, when they park in the right-of-way, and if they're taking public parking spots, we don't have enough now.
And I agree with that.
So I express that as a concern.
And this property has demonstrated that it can meet those requirements without having to have people parking the right-of-ways. We can't help what...
I understand, I understand. I, I'm just expressing that it's a real problem, that's all. And do we know, so this house is positioned in an envi, an area of environmental concern, in an ocean hazard area. Do we have any historical context for more recent storms and what neighboring homes may have experienced in the way of flooding? Or other damage?
Hurricane Isaias, it, it didn't really damage, that western end down there was one of the few areas that received damage. Now, of course, you had a lot of beach erosion over there on that...
Right.
Oceanfront side.
So there are other homes in areas of environmental concern that may not be there three years from now? So I'm, I'm only expressing, we continue to build in areas that are of environmental concern, which are, is concerning, and, and that we should be, we should be concerned about.
Steve, that, the section of road there that allows access to these residences, where does the town road stop and their private road begin?
It's about where the public parking lot is.
Okay. Didn't they have a gate up there at one time that they...
They did, and, and they're talking about putting gate up, up again because of the issues they're having with not their guests parking in the right-of-way, but the day-trippers or the vacationers that, or the locals.
That's what I was getting at, yes.
Yeah.
So that, so just this evening, we're looking to make a decision, and then they, they still have to go get their Kama permits.
That's correct.
So they'll have to meet all of the standards that Kama will put before them, because they are gonna be building in, in that oceanic area.
That's...
And then for the, for the parking in the driveway, you're gonna keep a, a very dutiful eye on making sure they meet those requirements if they get through the Kama permitting. And if they don't, then they'll have to reduce their inhabitable rooms.
I've been a Kama LPO, went to the local permitting officer for the town of Oak Island for twenty-two years, and this is a minor permit, and because it's a minor permit, the town LPO officer is acting on the behalf of the state, will issue this Kama minor permit. And, and we have reviewed it for compliance with the Kama regulations, and I do not see anything that is in conflict with, if any, the regulations currently.
One last question, Steve, just for my own clarification. Four criteria, the Court of Appeals approved the four general standards. Number four, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located and be in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. If each house, each of the other four houses had to get a special use permit, does this fall within the confines of the comprehensive plan?
Look, Brian, do I, I help on that, answering that question?
Steve.
Well, I mean, have you assessed whether it?
I, I think it harmonizes, if you're asking my opinion, I think it does harmonize with that area. We have the large home.
I agree it harmonizes with the other homes. But does it harmonize with the land use plan out there that said, only way you can have a bigger house is to go get a special use permit? So is that in compliance with the comprehensive plan?
I would say yes.
That's the whole purpose of the special use process. And then again, it gives the council certain tools. For instance, we've talked about the height of a wall, which sounds like it may be pre-existing, but to the extent a new wall is proposed, one of the conditions you could put on issuance is a maximum height on the wall. Even though it's going to be insured anyway at the building permit stage, you could also put a condition on it must comply with all UDO parking requirements. But to say that a special use permit makes it per se outside of the comprehensive land use plan, that's kind of the exception envelops the rule. So the reason why you have special use permits is it gives you more of a, gives the council an opportunity to look specifically at this particular proposed development, look at the criteria, and then to the extent you want additional safeguards by way of a condition of issuance, then you have that tool available to you as well. And I hope that answered your question, but didn't, I'll try again.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Steve, is this the last property on the, is this the last buildable lot there?
There, there's one more after this one.
One more?
Mm-hmm. There's only six lots in that subdivision and then four have developed. And of course, this one, if it gets a special use permit, and then the last one.
Any other comments from council?
I have a, I have a few questions real quick. Steve, has the KAMA minor been applied for?
It has not.
My understanding of that process is that the adjacent property owners will be provided notice of the application?
Yes.
Right, and they would have an opportunity.
Ryparian neighbors.
Right, and they'd have an opportunity to object and, and they could fight that battle as well.
Technically, there is no riparian neighbor. So notification would not have to be sent out to the adjacent property owner. But the adjacent property owner did receive notice for this hearing tonight.
Okay. And then they can avail themselves of a, a third-party hearing request if they disagree with the LPO's?
They have 20 days, I believe, to appeal the decision of, of permit from KAMA.
But that's after the issuance of it?
That's after the issuance of the permit.
And council could put a condition on this if they're inclined to approve it to ensure however many people you want in that general vicinity get real-time notice of where they are in their application process and real-time notice when the LPO decision's made. I'm just throwing that out there because the questions were asked about KAMA permits. Mr. Cleaver, in light of Mr. Edwards' testimony in response to council's questions and my questions, would you like to cross-examine them on those issues? Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to Councilmember Blalock's question regarding the last lot. Sequentially, this is lot number six. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So there is no lot to the west. The unimproved lot that you were referring to is in prior sequence to this lot. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it, the, it's, it's further up Kingsland Drive, in other words. There's not another development going on to the west. This will be the last.
Yeah, the inlet's to the west.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Cleaver, you want to cross on that answer? All right, thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Cleaver?
Good evening, Mr. Eads, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Greg Cleaver. I'm an attorney here in Oak Island. I represent the property owners, the LLC. It's Poseidon Palace. And as the council's well aware, there's certain requirements for the issuance of the special use permit. And one, one of the things I wanted just to mention was that we're not asking for the actual building permit tonight. What we're just seeking is to show the council that what we've submitted is in compliance with the requirements of the town's ordinances to get a special use permit issued so that the owners can proceed to file for a building permit and to build on the property. But since the change in the ordinance has occurred, this process is required to get that first step. And as I said, the ordinance has to meet certain, or the applicant has to meet certain standards to get that special use permit. And one of the ones that sort of council aware of is that the establishment and maintenance or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or general welfare. And I believe Mr. Edwards spoke regarding emergency services and how they can have access down there, especially with the size of the other properties that are there. The use that's being asked of the council and of the town is not, a, a use that's not already there. There's already homes there. And so this is not a, some other kind of use that, that would increase danger to, to the public. It's, it's another home. The second thing that we were just speaking of was, you know, the, the harmony of the existing development in the area where everything is to be located or where this house is going to be located. And yes, it's, it's lot number six out of the six lot-platted subdivision. It's surrounded on three sides by open water or beach. There's not going to be, you know, as far as I've been advised, there's not going to be any development to the west or request that the, you know, the home be encroach over the line and an easement or something be asked of the town. It's going to be well within the four corners of the lot. It is one of the last buildable lots of this size on Oak Island. It's, it can support a house that is as large as, as they want. And the house immediately to the, to the east of that is, is, is over 5,000 square feet. And the house located immediately to the east of that is close to 5,000 square feet. The vacant lot, I believe, is the next lot. And then the house located to the east of the vacant lot is just under 4,000 square feet. Uniformity in the area, I think, only promotes improvement of the area as opposed to something negative. You have conformity of houses. You, you don't have, you know, a small, traditional beach house and then a large structure right next to it. You have large houses in an area that I think people in Oak Island and people coming to Oak Island recognize that area as a, as a large house area, a nice place to go to on Oak Island. And I, I think that it, it promotes the uniformity, you know, of the area, and it will only improve it. It certainly also will not injure or be anything detrimental to the value of the surrounding properties. The values of the surrounding properties are already significantly high. So this is not something that's going to, if it's constructed, necessarily devalue surrounding property owners. If anything, I think it would possibly be seen as a completion of the development, which would only, you know, in, not my personal opinion, but in, in, in some eyes, it will show that the development is complete and it will improve the area and increase the value. With regard to, the special use has to be, in all other respects, in compliance with the ordinances. And I think that if you see from the app, from the application as submitted, the detail of the site plan, how the house is, is, the renderings of how it's going to look, I believe that all of that is within the requirements of the written, of the statute. It, it, it meets all of the requirements that, that lot requires to build a house of this, of this, of this size. It meets the, you know, the ordinance. And again, this is the first step in, in, in the process of building. It, it's, it's not the final step. So as in any construction, I, I think, I don't think there's been a construction ever that has not had to have some kind of tweak or some kind of turn or an adjustment. But at this point, what's submitted is just their, what they would like to do. There's, if, if other parts of the ordinance, like we're talking about KAMA or parking, are not feasible and have to be adjusted, they'll, they'll make the proper adjustment. But we're, we're not at that step yet. We're right at the beginning, just asking that what we are wanting to build, we're saying, we meet the requirements that the town set forth, and this lot is an acceptable lot to do it. So again, we, we think it, it would be in conformity with the area. And I don't believe it poses any kind of, you know, negative property value implication to any of the surrounding properties. Mr. Edwards, you know, addressed some of the other details about the construction. But if anybody has any questions, for me, I try my best to answer them. But we would ask that, you know, we submit that the, what we've put in in the application meets the, the requirements for the issuance of the, of the special use permit to at least get them started. That's all. Mr. Eads.
Mr. Cleaver, you heard the council ask me for a legal opinion. Feel free as a licensed North Carolina attorney if you disagree with my.
No, no, sir, I, I, I agree that, that.
Add to it, take?
No, I, I agree with, with, with what you said, and that's what I was saying in the beginning, is that the, the, the purpose of this process is the result of the change in the statute. And we have to meet those criteria in order to be able to build a large house, which the statute allows for. We just have to show what the intention is to, to do that. And we think that based on the submission, it meets those criteria.
Counsel?
Comment?
Mr. Edwards, staff and cross-examination? All right, Mr. Cleaver, if you want to do a summation, I mean, I know we're not in the courtroom, but you want to add anything? Great. If not.
No, just, again, and not, and not, and not to be repetitive too much, but what we're applying for is just, again, the first step in, in the process. And I, I think in everything that we submitted, it, it meets the requirements and the standards that have to be met to do that. And, and it's not in an area where we have just one lot that's the size that permits it. It's in an area where multiple houses are very large. And again, the house immediately to the left of it, or looking at it, but to the east is over 5,000 square feet. And surrounding properties are, are either close to 5,000 or just, or just under. So it's, it's in an area that would, that would maintain uniformity and conformity, and I think would increase the property values to the surrounding owners. So that would be the summation I have. Again, I would submit, though, that the application that we did submit meets those standards for the issuance of the permit.
Thank you, Mr. Cleaver. Madam Mayor, I only saw Mr. Edwards get sworn in earlier. Mr. Cleaver being an officer of the court, didn't, it's not required to get sworn in. Is there any other member of the audience that would like to offer testimony during this hearing? Madam Clerk, please let the minutes reflect. No one is taking me up on that offer. Madam Mayor, at this point, it'd be appropriate time to close the evidentiary portion of this hearing and begin our deliberations.
Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Second? All in favor? Unanimous.
Madam Mayor, just as in the last hearing on, for this particular SUP application, the same criteria is found on page 31 of the agenda packet. Some of it was discussed during the evidentiary portion of the hearing. I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any other discussion from council? Do I have a motion? From council on this permit?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the proposed special use permit and to adopt the associated findings of fact.
Before that, second, Mr. Martin, is there any conditions you would like to append to?
I have no conditions to append.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? One in favor. Nays?
No.
Four nays. Motion fails.
Madam Mayor, we will wait till we receive the minutes, review the minutes, draft a proposed order denying this application and circulate it for approval.
I don't know if this is the time to ask this. Can I ask a question?
This, the vote's been taken.
I know, but I just, for clear, I just wanted some information. I don't, it won't affect.
It's about the substances of this application, I would ask you.
No, I just want to come out, never mind.
I don't want to stop you. I'm just saying.
I just wanted to know, all I wanted to know is real simple. Who owns the land on the other, on the west side? Who's responsible? If something happens, who's going to be responsible for whatever has to be done to that piece of property? Or to protect the one we're talking about, for that matter.
Right, staff, I'm sure, Steve, we can look into that and come back with the identity of that adjacent property owner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That closes our public hearings. Onto presentations, proclamations, and recognitions. Tonight, we have a presentation from Oak Island Water Rescue.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I don't know if you can see, will they see the PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
See it now, all right. All right, I'm going to give a little introduction about Oak Island Water Rescue. It's going to be over here. Who?
Excuse me, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Pete Grenzi. I happen to be the current chief of the water rescue team. There are other members of the team here. We'll all introduce them after the presentation, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
All right. Who are we? What do we do? And what assets do we have? A lot of people ask these things. Well, we're a 503, 1C nonprofit. Currently, by our bylaws, we're limited to 20 volunteer rescuers and five auxiliary members. We are currently in the process of changing our bylaws so we can increase those numbers due to the fact the population of this town and visitors are increasing exponentially. We, the members should have some boating experience and willingness to be on call for, on 24/7. We train monthly in boat handling. We have CPR during the winter time and other rescue techniques. Most of the members are retired. Some still work full-time. We have a wide variety of experience, anywhere from firemen, paramedics, US Coast Guard, military, teachers, commercial fishermen. None of us receive pay except for equipment allowance. This equipment allowance allows us to buy water shoes that, because we don't know, individuals prefer their own. And I'm sorry, I want my own swimming trunks compared to somebody else issuing me some. So that's what those are for. A lot of us also have used it to buy dry suits, which the team does not provide, just for added safety and so we can do our job better during the colder months. What do we do? We are the shallow water rescuers. We're, we do rescues right off the beach, the intercoastal waterway and the marshes. We work very closely with the Oak Island Coast Guard Station. We assist the fire department and the police department and rescues near water and on the beach. We are on call, but not on duty at the station. Each member drives personal vehicle to the station or the scene. We also assist a lot with the sheriff's department, and we use them for assistance, assistance during marine patrol. We just recently met with them. Because we do get some limited funding from the county, they've asked if we'd be willing to go, like they patrol at Wake Waukama. And if, they've had incidences where they've had to search for victims. had to search for victims, and they've asked if we'd be able to participate in the future if they have, so have a need for that. And of course, since we're, provided some funding from the county, we said yes. 2021, we had 60 call-outs, five actual saves where someone was going to end up dead or severely injured, 20 calls for people too far out, three unidentified floating objects. Have several of those already this year. Turns out, most of the time, it's from the dredging process. We did 10 beach transports, two flare sightings, and 17 odd things we labeled as miscellaneous, which we never could figure out what it was. We also do food drives. We did our third annual food drive this year, very successful. We were able to deliver several truckloads of food to the various different pantries in the area. We do surf launch training during the warmer months. That's a very technical process for us, and we practice it a lot so that when the time comes, we can do it safely and efficiently. We do a lot of member training. We want each one of our members to take the boats out besides our regular monthly training to be familiar with the operation of the boat so that when the emergency comes, they don't have to go, oh, how do I start it now? Because one monthly training is enough. So we, a lot, we do a lot of extra stuff that's above and beyond what we're expected as a team member. We did recently, recently, some member pool training at the community college. We had a lot of new members that never have been in the water jump in with a PFD on, so this got them familiar, what happens. We have dry suits, as you can see, one of our fellows looks like Gumby, and, but it's an interesting thing, just so that we know how to react when we have to get into the water. We hope we don't, but you never know. And we also practice, we have a new rescue dummy that we purchased that's to simulate a person, so we don't actually have to put a person in the water, and he's floating with, in the black suit there. We do hovercraft training. I don't think the video is, will the video play?
I couldn't get it to play earlier when I...
Okay. What assets do we have? We have three four-wheel-drive trucks, two pickups, and one SUV. Two of them are from 2005, and we're looking to start to replace one of them. But as you know, the process of getting vehicles anymore, you put your name on a list, and you might wait a year. We have three boats, one small inflatable surf launch, one large inflatable, and one hovercraft. We are in the process of purchasing a John boat replacement. If you ever want to have an interest, look up what a whalley is, W-H-A-L-Y. This is what we're looking for. I couldn't get the pictures to load up, but it's coming from the Netherlands. It's all plastic-injected and virtually indestructible. They take sledgehammers to it, and you can't dent it. But the nice thing about it, the bow will drop down, so it makes it easy for us to load patients onto it if we need to transport them, instead of having to haul them over the railings. Miscellaneous stuff that we have also are night vision, FLIR, spotlights, backboards, and of course, the drone. We did, we've done the mud rescue this year, as most of you saw. Great use of the hovercraft for the first time, able to save three people from the mud. We assist the Coast Guard on a regular basis. This is when we went out, one of their markers in the Lockwood folly broke loose, and we took two of their gentlemen out because they couldn't get onto the sandbar. They were able to get it off, and we helped them tow it back so they could put it back into position eventually. Then we have, no, the picture didn't show up, plane crash just, just last couple of days ago. And then we have lots of this, lots of these floats, which we really don't like on the beach. As you know, a couple of years ago, one young man got caught on his float from, with the wind coming from the north, and they finally caught up to him when he's a mile and a half out in the ocean. Luckily, he did not fall off that float. And then, of course, we always have the cleanup afterwards. Our station was hit hard during the hurricane. We had three feet of water. We had to gut the station. We hope we can have you all soon to come see what we've done to try to improve it, and we're always trying, continuing to try to find ways that we can improve our service to this community. Questions? Much appreciation. Thank you, sir.
Very proud of you guys.
All right, I'd just like to introduce my, rest of my team. We have officers, the officers stand up first, please. We're missing one, and then the regular team members, and we have auxiliary members here also, so please stand up. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a proclamation for Arbor Day. Would you like to make comments first?
I would prefer that you read it so that we can make comments after and maybe avoid redundancy.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So this is a proclamation that marks the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day, and also marks Oak Island's 25th year as a recipient of Tree City USA Award, and is an initiative of Oak Island Environmental Advisory Committees, which is, who's represented here. Oak Island was awarded 26 trees by the Wilmington-based Plastic Ocean Project and Trees for Trash in exchange for 650 pounds of litter collected by the Adopta Highway and Davis Canal Marsh Cleanup Volunteer Groups in 2021. That's no small measure. It is fitting and proper to recognize citizen efforts to keep our community clean, beautiful, and green. So in order to commemorate recognition of the importance of reforestation, restoration, and replacement of trees, and maintaining and sustaining biodiversity, natural wildlife habitats, clean air and water, and confronting challenging climate issues and store damage mitigation, and whereas in order to commemorate the above achievements, the Environmental Advisory Committee has requested that mayor and council issue the town's annual proclamation designating a day in April each year as Arbor Day, and call upon citizens to recognize the importance of such actions to sustaining the health, welfare, well-being, and beauty of our island and coastal community. So whereas the Environmental Advisory Committee wishes to commemorate Oak Island's Arbor Day by planting four trees in Veterans Park to replace those destroyed in recent storms, I now therefore, as mayor of Oak Island, hereby proclaim April 13th, tomorrow, as 2022 Arbor Day for Oak Island, and ask our citizens to celebrate and reaffirm the ideas and tireless efforts of citizens to keep our community viable and beautiful.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, counsel, staff, I'm Margaret Ann Johnson. I'm the chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee. Joyce Kilmer was right, that only God can create a tree. But it takes caring, people committed to environmental health, and maintaining those trees in order to replace them and to care for them and keep them alive. So I would like to take this time to recognize the people who've been involved in this initiative. It's been no small measure, notwithstanding the 650 pounds that was picked up by those two groups that you mentioned. First of all, I want to acknowledge our Public Works Department, Scott Thornall. Thank you so much. The Public Works Department not only has made the ground ready for the trees tomorrow, but they helped to transfer the trees when they were delivered to one of our members' homes, to the beautification club's site under the water tower, so that they could be watered and, and kept alive. The four trees that will be planted tomorrow come from the 26 trees, and the remaining trees will be used somehow in Earth Day, which is on April 29th, excuse me, April 22nd. They will be set up for adoption. Hopefully, we'll get people to agree to take them and to take care of them. I want to especially acknowledge Scott, who's been enthusiastic and energetic in supporting us in all of our initiatives, and Connect Tower, who has kept up with the requirements for Tree City USA and made sure that every year that it has been accomplished. I also want to acknowledge the Adopta Highway Committee, Skip Cox. I don't think he's here tonight, but that group has, for a while, kept our streets and under the bridges, of course, clean, and they will be participating in the cleanup tomorrow after the tree planting under the Barbie Bridge. That is probably one of the most littered area on our island. So if you would like to participate, please let Skip know. Also, the Davis Canal Marsh Cleanup, Mr. Ed Lovett, I don't think he's here either. But this group has sort of taken over the Environmental Advisory Committee's cleanups twice a year because they were willing to go out in kayaks and pick up along the waterways as well as on the, on the land. Also, the Oak Island Beautification Club, they stepped in when we needed a place to put these trees, and there were a lot of them, and allowed us to use their resources as long as we took care of them. Also, Tree Peace, I think we have two Tree Peace members here, a volunteer community group supporting the trees on this island and perpetuation and reforestation. And also, the beautification, the Oak Island Beautification, excuse me, the Beach Preservation Society, they have helped us also in this effort. Tomorrow, the planting will be at 9:15. We invite everybody to come. Arbor Day is, this is the 150th anniversary, as you mentioned. Arbor Day is officially on the 29th, but each community can, can determine when they want to do it because of the planting situation. So we chose tomorrow because the Honor Society of the South Brunswick Middle School had approached Mr. Thornall about planting some trees in order to help the area around Veterans Park to be restored with trees from the ones that were destroyed in the, in the last storm. So we will be there with them. They will be learning how to plant, and hopefully, they will, and hopefully, they will take the trees, we, we hope they will adopt the trees and be able to continue to keep them alive, because as you know, it takes a lot of watering to make a tree grow. We also want to also recognize the Plastic Ocean Project for reminding us of the connection between litter, climate change, recycling, and environmental health. All of these are connected, and we, we do that through, through reforestation with our trees here. So thank you so much for allowing us to participate this year. As you know, we haven't had an Arbor Day or an Earth Day in two years because of the pandemic, so we're coming back with a vengeance, and we appreciate your support. And not least, Mayor, we appreciate the continuing support of the council and staff in all of our efforts. Also, as you mentioned, this is the 25th year of our receipt of the Tree City USA Award, and there are four requirements. This is Pam Johnson. Pam is one of our members, and she's been handling the Tree City issues as well as Smart Yards, and she has a presentation to make to the town.
Thank you, Margaret. Certainly. Madam Mayor, Town Council, Administration, and citizens of Oak Island, the Environmental Advisory Committee thank you for this opportunity to recognize the town of Oak Island for its commitment to the mission of environmental conservation and maintaining and growing our tree canopy. On behalf of the Environmental Advisory Committee, I am extremely honored to present to you a Tree City USA flag in recognition of 25 years of Arbor Day foundation, recognition of being a tree city. In order to receive this recognition, we have to maintain the four core standards of urban forestry, and that includes maintaining a tree board or department, having a community tree ordinance, spending at least $2 per capita on urban forestry, and celebrating Arbor Day. This is our town's opportunity to celebrate the work of our forefathers, to celebrate the work of our residents, and to demonstrate to residents, visitors, and to our great nation that we are committed to environmental conservation and growing of tree canopies during this period of changing times. Please accept this gift of a four-by-six-foot flag designating us as a Tree City USA.
Thank you very much. I'll trade you for a proclamation. On behalf of counsel, I accept this flag, recognizing Oak Island as a tree city. And thank you very much for all that the committee and all of our committees are, who are volunteers do to benefit Oak Island. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
We'd like to take a 10-minute break. We'll come back with, we'll start with agendas. 10 minutes, please. Call the meeting back to order. Are there any adjustments of the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, but they will be exceedingly brief, and per the advice of the clerk, I have to pull all the minutes to make two corrections, but it will be brief.
Thank you. Do any others changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. This, we'll move next to public comment. Please, if you'll state your name and address before you address counsel, I ask you to honor the three-minute time limit. If you, in effect, have any written comments, if you would please submit those to the clerk for the sake of the minutes, or if you'd like to submit them after the meeting, you may do so. And if, at this time, any input that attendees have regarding beach nourishment funding options, if you'd also please speak at this time. First, I have Andy Spradley.
Good evening. Andy Spradley, 114 Southeast Sixth Street here in Oak Island. I'm representing the Oak Island Beach Preservation Society. Mayor?
Yes.
Members of counsel. First, a huge thank you. We had our spring auction, and it was a very big success, and that is on the citizens who helped participate and everyone else who helped us. So again, thank you. Bidders are, winning bidders are already picking up their items at the 801 Ocean Building down by the Ocean, Oak Island Pier. Moving on, okay, we're done with that one, so we're going to go start another raffle. So we've got a raffle for Shaboomy Beach Shade. Strand's Outfitters has donated this to us, and it's great. It was very successful last year. We're selling virtual tickets for $5, or for $20, you get five tickets. Look for flyers like this at different businesses around the town. There's one downstairs. You can also go to www.beachokis.org/raffle, and that will also give you a way to buy one of these virtual tickets. I also have some flyers with me, if anyone is interested. We're starting our flash sweeps. If you're not familiar with it, the beach accesses all have a... have a parent. This is someone that cleans up, puts the doggy bags in, that sort of thing. With the pandemic, we had to stop these. What we do is we get a bunch of volunteers to show up, and in five minutes, we do a sweep of the beach, the parking area, clean up everything. We also write down what we found, because it's kind of interesting. Lots of cigarette butts, and every once in a while, something that looks like a cigarette butt, but it's not. But we have a lot of fun doing this. It's a great way to get people out, get them interested in helping to clean up the beaches, keep them clean, and enjoy a nice day with a bunch of us. We'll be announcing where and when on our webpage and on our Facebook page. Keep an eye on that, because we will change it throughout the summer. And also, would you like to be a member of Oak Island Beach Preservation Society? We would love to have some more of you take advantage, come in with a bunch of sometimes kind of strange people, but we have a good time with it, and you'll help take care of our beaches. We also do educational outreach. That's why we're doing things like the auction and the raffle, because that helps afford the doggy bags. It helps pay for some of the education we do, and we would love to have you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Morris Reese?
Morris Reese. I live at 116 Northeast 12th Street. Last month, I was at the city council meeting about the beach renourishment. I just wanted to say how impressed I was, how thorough it was. It just really made me feel good to be a part of this community, and I just wanted to say a big kudos that I was very impressed with what happened. It's easy to get on social media and complain, but I was very impressed with what I saw. I just wanted to give you a kudos.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Darah Boyle?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Darah Boyle, 216 Northeast 47th Street. I do want to say upfront that I appreciate the work that our finance director, David Hatton, has done on the beach funding models, and I also appreciate, in particular, council members Barton and Kraft in working cooperatively with staff in coming up with these proposals. Recognizing that there is much that could change over the next three years, it is important what you have for a basic framework. Option one includes budget projections over a property revaluation year. And in that case, tax rate and tax values and tax base are not reliable indicators at this point of whether or not Oak Island taxpayers will be asked to pay more for sand in fiscal year '23, '24, and beyond. What does show that is not a revenue-neutral tax rate, but you can project a revenue-neutral amount of sand tax in that year. I put at each one of your places before the meeting a one-page sheet that has a revised option one to show you how that might look. In particular, the two numbers I'd like to point out, without going into any further explanation, but would be happy till a later time. The sand tax amount in '23, '24, 1.7 million. The current proposed amount is 2.1 million, in round numbers. That increase over the revenue-neutral amount is a little over $300,000, which is the same as a penny on the tax rate in this year's budget. I'll just respectfully request that council consider as part of this framework going forward, working for a revenue-neutral sand tax rate in '23, '24. And I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much for the work that you did.
Phil Dudley?
Phil Dudley, 218 Cellar Street. In recognition of Arbor Day, we have Tree Peace, I'm a member of Tree Peace OKI, and we pulled out some excerpts out of the Southport UDO, where they, their vegetation ordinances. And there's one that's just so striking to me. I'd like to read it very briefly. "A robust tree canopy provides a consistent cooling effect on our community and on individual properties that can significantly reduce cooling costs for homeowners and businesses alike. One large tree can lift up to 100 gallons of water out of the ground and discharge it in the air in a day, helping to filter the air that we breathe and control stormwater. And they mitigate damage caused by wind during tropical storms and hurricanes." That's their opening statement, and they have a very strong commitment there in Southport, and I feel like we are continuing to work toward that ourselves here in Oak Island. Thank you for your part in that. You can find out more about Tree Peace OKI on Facebook. I'd like to change gears and talk about something, well, we talked about it earlier today, these large businesses that disguise themselves as homes. A 12, 13-bedroom building is really a motel, and so let's call it what it is. I noticed in Caswell Beach, again, available on the internet, and I provided it to you, their Caswell Beach UDO, they limit structures, all private structures, to two stories above parking. It's right there. I've provided it to you. And 35 foot above mean elevation. So I've had some discussion with one council person. Don't know how they did it, if state of North Carolina law, if they're within, state of North Carolina law, if they've been challenged. Maybe it only holds up until they're challenged. I honestly don't know. But, you know, we're looking around for best practices in the business world. I've seen you all do it, too. That would seem to me to be a best practice that we could adopt here. We just don't have parking. The one close to me, literally, you could get 20 cars under there in this place that has 13 bedrooms, but it would take you a half an hour to unpack it if the guy that's up in the front wants to get out. So they're going to park in public parking. Okay, that's what they're going to do. Anyway, thank you all. I really appreciate you all. I have a great deal of confidence in the board, the committee here, and the town council, I mean, and the staff, and thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley.
Dennis Minery?
I am Dennis Minery. I live over in South Harbor Village, 5021 Glen Cove Drive. Madam Mayor, honorable council members, support management, and citizens, plus the viewing public, good evening. I just want to give you an update. I am the chairperson of the Oak Island Friends of Parks Foundation. We're a separate entity from the town, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The Parks Foundation raises money through events, raffles, and donations to invest in accessories that enhance the Oak Island Parks experience for all citizens as well as all visitors. We are 100% volunteer-run. We have two fundraisers coming up that I just want to alert people to. We have one this Saturday. It's a photo shoot with the Easter Bunny. It'll be over at the Oak Island Pier, formerly known as the Yopon Pier, from 10:00 a.m. till noon. We have volunteer Gina Barry playing the Easter Bunny, and we have photographer Brenda Dory, who is donating her considerable talent and time. The other big fundraiser coming up is our biannual Battle at the Beach Pickleball Tournament. So for all pickleball players, this is your chance to get into the game there. We're doing new and improved version of it. We've gotten better each time. We think this is going to be really a step up, because we are going through pickleballbrackets.com. So if you're pickleball play, you might want to note that. Go to pickleballbrackets.com and sign up for our tournament. It's May 14th and 15th. We'll have text alerts because of the town's Wi-Fi now out at the courts, real-time bracketing, and staggered start to expedite play. We'll also have a skills fundraiser the evening before, on Friday evening, the 13th, from 4:00 to 5:00. Moving forward, I'll be testing an Oculus headset that someone from Facebook is sending to me that we're going to test and see if it would work with a software that's going to be purchased to help enhance the experience with people at the Ocean Ed Center and the Nature Center. We're pretty excited about that. It's a total immersion 360 experience. This works. It's going to be a wow. What else? We also are installing, we have four more benches that have been purchased that have to be installed, including a memorial to Mrs. John Brown. Working with David Kelly and management on installing shade sales. That'll be out by the Splash Pad and the Pirate's Cove. Our motto is better parks equal better lives. If you'd like to join us and be part of that equation, please send an email to info@okifriendsofparks.org, or go to our website for more information, and that's okifriendsofparks.org. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you for all the foundation does.
Pamela Johnson?
Pamela Johnson, 101 Northeast 28th Street. There are two items I would like to pay special attention to, and hopefully, we as a town will pay special attention to. One is strengthening our tree ordinances and strengthening our environmental ordinances. Other communities have very strong ordinances, and I believe that could help us as we grow our tree canopies and as we maintain native vegetation on the island, and as we minimize stormwater runoff. So that's one thing I hope in the UDO audit, I'm sure, well, I'm not sure, but I would think there'd be some restructuring of the ordinances. Second, I feel we need an ordinance outlining ethical conduct of committee members. We have an albatross around our neck with social media. Anybody can get on there, say anything. And when we are on a town-appointed committee, we represent the town of Oak Island. And I feel that there have been inappropriate comments that have been made, and therefore I feel we need an ethics-driven UDO to present this from occurring in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carrie, and I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading the last name. Is it Miller?
My name is Carrie Miller, and I live at 1503 West Oak Island Drive, about two weeks out of the month. And my question, it's more of a question than a statement. I've been walking the beach since I got down here on Sunday, and I noticed that on the dunes in front of all of these houses, people are just walking over the dunes and have no idea that they're not supposed to be up there. And this is prevalent in many of the rental houses that I, when I've talked to people about, you know, where they're from and what they're doing, and I just wondered what kind of ordinances and what kind of rules and regulations the council is going to make to prevent homeowners who are on the beach from digging out, because I noticed a lot of that is occurring, where people are out digging out access to the beach, and just wondered, more questions than I have comments. I have to say one thing. We experienced a Hilton Head Island one year when they had beach renourishment, and it was a nightmare. I have to say that this has been an extremely pleasant experience, from what I've seen, and I think whoever is doing the beach renourishment needs to be commended for that. And I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howard Mullendor?
Name's Howard Mullendor, 1805 East Oak Island Drive, and I just want to speak in favor of the walkovers on the island. They're real assets of the island. I know you want to do another one on the west end. I think you should do that. That'd be very important to the residents down there, give them access they don't have today. But I'd like for us to maintain what we have. In Southeast 20th Street, the first half of the half that was replaced last year because of ECEs is great, but the other half, we need to get it done ASAP. And I know there were some CAM issues, and we have to wait or whatever, but I would encourage you to get it as a working project funded and move it ahead before we lose it in the next storm, because it's in bad shape. One thing you could do in the meantime, the light on the walkover in the old section is not working. It'd be nice to have that working. A lot of the boards are popping and nails. You can't do anything with that till you screw them, so, because I take my hammer down there sometimes, and it doesn't last, so. But please, I would ask you to be proactive and not reactive to the next storm, and let's try and get it done as soon as we can, because it is a real asset for those of us who are on the wooded section of the island. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all. I had signed up.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Council reports. Mr. Bott?
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, welcome to spring, and there are always surprises, things coming out of the ground that you forgot you planted. And seeing an editorial that was praising the progress being made by Oak Island in the Port City paper was a pleasant surprise. We don't see much of that. There are two concerns that are reoccurring, and I want to share what I know about them with the citizens. Later this evening, I know Mr. Kelly is going to give a report on sidewalks and crosswalks. That was a priority in the last budget. It was an initiative, and the short answer is we're dancing with DOT. It's a complicated dance. They're difficult to work with, and while some of the visible improvements are already in, there's more to come, and we will continue, because it's a goal for '22, '23, continue to work on sidewalks and crosswalks and safety. We've agreed to that. So your patience is appreciated. And lastly, there's been a lot of chatter online, largely about paid parking. Now, having survived paid parking, the 219 version, yeah, Sheila has survived more, there are a couple of things that I want to say. One, this is a reoccurring polemic that divides our community, and it has, which is unfortunate. And I think that what we need to recognize is the newly-elected council members all ran on a platform of introducing some form of paid parking, if feasible and warranted. So we are going to take it up. My suggestion is we take it up after the budget is completed, and we look at it from the standpoint of it's, as I've always said, necessary and inevitable to protect lives, ensure traffic safety, protect property, and provide an offset for beach expenses and expand amenities. Our sister communities have adopted it, but I will also say it is a wicked problem. There are no easy silver bullet solutions to this, because we're balancing the rights of residents, we're balancing a capacity problem with only 1,100 spaces, we're looking at an equity issue in terms of how it's applied, and we're solving the right-of-way problem simultaneously. And I guarantee you that no matter what is said about it, there is a solution. It's going to take thoughtful, deliberative study. We're going to have to learn from our sister communities who have adopted it. Some have adopted it and then started over again. They fired the vendor. They're mixed results, but we have a greater body of information we can access. And I think the process that council used, I think the, if you will, the And I think the process that council used, I think the, if you will, the Martin Craft solution, option one, where council's work was very transparent, it was in the open. Folks saw the line of thinking, the process, and I think we should adopt that model as we go forward. And I think that we should have multiple models to look at, if in fact, we decide to choose paid parking. Because I think the last experience has left all of us with a bad taste in our mouths about how that was processed. So, yes, we hear you. Yes, there is a place for it. Yes, we'll take it up once the budget is finalized. We have an entire year to learn, to study, and to develop models that the public can look at, examine, and react to. So thank you for all the emails. We hear you. End report.
I have no report.
Mr. Craft?
Yesterday, I went to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting and sat in with them. I would like, Madam Mayor, to start going regularly to various advisory boards and see what the tremendous volunteers in our towns doing for our town. Yesterday, I learned from the Parks and Rec Board that the Ocean Ed Center, right across the street, has all kinds of stuff going on. After-school program, May through Labor Day, they're going to be open, free to the public, free to everybody, as well as the Nature Center. Parks and Rec Department is talking about pickleball surfacing of the courts. All kinds of stuff's going on. I'm saying that to say, people get involved, please. We've got some great people on some boards, and we need some more great people on some more boards. Every time I talk to people, I ask them to get involved in boards. The mayor's going to announce that she's been working on town forums for the people to come talk to the town. I think May 16th for the business people, and May 26th for the rental companies to come give some give and take. And after that is out of the way, I would like to move, once a quarter, for the people of the town to come tell us what's important to them, and not just for three minutes and us not respond, but give us a question, we'll give them an answer, they can give us a rebuttal, we can give them another answer, and everybody can learn what's going on, and we can be on the same page. Lastly, yes, the beach re-nourishment is the biggest thing on everybody's agenda. Parking enforcement, I hear that loud and clear, people are parking for days in the beach access, walking on the dunes, and we're going to step up the enforcement and get on top of that the best we can, and we will get on top of that. But I'm very proud of Oak Island. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Craft.
Just briefly, I'd like to echo what Mr. Bach said about jumping through the hoops of paid parking. It is not an easy solution, but as you said, there are solutions. It's just an unusual circumstance we're in. On the other hand, I was very encouraged by the folks who came and talked about the trees, that is a passion of mine. We're talking about oak trees here, not the other kind. Sorry, I couldn't help myself. But it is, it's very, very important that we look at our tree canopy and, from all different points of view, from aesthetics to stormwater. So I really am encouraged by that, and I support all you all are trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
I'll keep it brief, because everyone's already highlighted some of the things that we're going to work on coming up, and I don't want to repeat all of that. I will point out, just adding on to our initiatives and interest in pedestrian safety, in not only providing sidewalks, but we continue to look and research the feasibility of adding greenways into our area, not just on island, but within the entire jurisdiction of the town of Oak Island. And another big step moving in that direction, I was recently appointed as an alternate for the Brunswick, as the Brunswick County alternate representative to the Cape Fear RPO. The Cape Fear RPO, for those of you who don't know, is the Rural Transportation and Planning Organization. So the overall goal of the RPO is to develop plans and priorities regarding the regional needs for all transportation improvements, while collaborating with regional partners, i.e. our neighbors, and as well as the North County Department of Transportation. So we've already had some discussions, and I've been on their distribution list, and so we were made aware of maybe some grants that may be available in the upcoming future that we'll certainly take a look at. But I just want to assure you that we are continuing to move forward, trying to explore how greenways could help us with pedestrian safety, but also improve and increase our recreational opportunities here within the town of Oak Island.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, and in case you were wondering, the nomination came from our mayor for the Cape Fear RPO, so thank you, Madam Mayor, for the nomination and then my appointment.
Thank you for serving. Just as a mayor's report, I wanted to let you know that this week, I'm attending a meeting along with Chief Anselmo, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Sykes, and Mr. Bowden Chance, a citizen appointee to the Fire Fees Committee, to talk about fire fees for this next coming year. Also attending a Brunswick County mayor meeting, May 5th, that I'll report on in the May meeting as to what transpires there that has relevance for us. Also attending a League of Municipalities Conference in Wilmington, the week of the 25th of this month, called City Lights. So I look forward to the opportunities to network with other municipalities, learn what they're doing, and what effective practices we can bring back here to Oak Island. I want to echo council's remarks about paid parking. It is a recurring concern expressed by the community. I understand that there are two diametrically opposed views relative to paid parking, and that will be challenging to balance. There are framings that I think will be important, how we frame the opportunity or the challenge, the problem, if you will, will determine the outcome. I see a lot on Facebook about paid parking monetizing the beach. I'm not as optimistic as some of our citizens, but I do think there's an opportunity to establish some offsetting funds for access amenities and other beach amenities that will make our beach-going experience more enjoyable. The objectives that we clarify in addressing this problem will also frame not only how well it'll provide us some accountability for how well we achieve the outcomes we intended. I look forward to taking up this discussion in July, once the FY 2223 budget is set in June. So I look forward to that discussion. And I also want to thank our community for their generous support for those in need. I think this is something that sets us apart as Oak Islanders. I am always impressed by those who rally to come forward to help those who are in a pinch, and it's one of the things that I very much love about living here, that makes me very proud to be an Oak Islander. And that's my report for this month. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Bach?
Yes.
I think you want to pull some things off of the consent agenda.
This will be very simple. On page 49, since it was included in my remarks and I saw it in the minutes, the town has discussed paid parking in 2014, 15, 16, 17, and implemented. We actually approved and then rescinded the approval, we did not implement, if that word should be struck. And on page 61, there's a very accurate list of the conditions discussed with the Williamson Track contingent, and during the meeting, our council suggested a development agreement, and that is in progress. So this report is partial. For those of you who actually read the minutes, there's more detail to come. And Mr. Eads, can I ask when the development agreement, is there a due date?
Well, my intention is, we asked them if they wanted to take the first stab. We haven't seen anything yet, so I've started it. My intention is to get it to them, hopefully by the end of next week, and ultimately to have a agreement for your consideration, your being the elected body's consideration at the May meeting.
Thank you. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of February 21st, March 8th, and March 22nd as amended?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Craft, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Committee appointments, we have three terms that are available for the Par Three Committee, one ending in 2025, one ending in January of 2024, and one ending in January 2023. These are for town residents who do not live in the South Harbor community. There was at least one other applicant, but that person doesn't qualify in that they are a member of the South Harbor community. Those positions have been filled as such. There is consideration by council to change the committee charter relative to membership requirements to open those spots up for those who are interested. We have one individual who has applied, Rosalie Farley. There's an application. I have one question, we may not have the answer to tonight, but in the application, there's nothing expressed as to Ms. Farley's experience with golf or landscaping or anything of that nature. So I just wanted to point that out. Does anyone have any information in that regard on council for Ms. Farley?
Only what's on the application, Madam Mayor.
Can I speak? I'm here.
Oh.
I'm Rosalie.
Sure.
Could you come? Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry, can you come to the?
Thank you. My name is Rosalie Farley, and I live on 101 72nd Street. I have worked in parks and recs in Greenville, North Carolina. I was the tennis, and it's sports, but I worked as the assistant tennis director, and I do have recreation, and I taught tennis. I have been around golf all my life. I lived 30 years in Greenville at a golf course. It's Brook Valley Golf Course, and I saw that there was no one applying for the position, and I would really like to add to this and be a representative for Oak Island.
Council, we have one candidate. Any comments or questions before we vote?
No, Madam Mayor. I'll move to appoint the candidate, given her statement.
Second.
All in favor? Excellent, unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Farley.
Point the 2025 expiration.
Thank you for the...
Before we move on, I would like to make a motion to ask the administration to review the rules for the Par Three Committee in terms of the way it's balanced by residents, because the committee is frankly struggling to staff itself, and I think such a revision might be in order, but we'll defer to management.
Yes, sir, we can bring that back to you next month, and then re-advertise for the other positions.
Do we need a motion?
No, sir, you can just have a consensus of council to direct staff.
Is there a consensus?
There's a consensus of council.
Can we also consider adding or changing a seat to an at-large position?
What do you mean by that?
An at-large position would not have to meet the requirements of living in South Harbor or within Oak Island town limits as a permanent resident. Currently, we only allow permanent residents to apply, so an at-large seat could be open to a non-permanent resident within the town?
Let's let the administration review that. That's an interesting concept, and as our esteemed counsel always says, that wouldn't be precedent-setting, but it might move us in a direction, so I...
It might move us in a direction we don't want to go.
Let's talk about that. Is that fair? I'll let the administration come back.
I think that's something to take up in May. I think that the lines we draw around the at-large seat, it needs to be clear that that individual meets all the other requirements in terms of attendance and otherwise, since we don't permit virtual attendance of meetings. So there are some qualifications there. I'm not opposed to it, but we don't need lame-duck positions holding seats when there's work to be done.
Yeah, I would concur with maintaining attendance policies and no virtual meetings. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
So to clarify, there were three openings on the Par Three.
Yes.
We had one person apply, and I think if one person applied, that person should get the longer term.
Yes, and thank you for pointing that out. So this would be...
In January of '25.
Is anyone opposed, since I didn't stipulate that, or it wasn't stipulated in the motion? Is anyone opposed in appointing Ms. Farley to the seat that ends January 2025?
Is the applicant interested in serving that duration in time?
I do.
Fair enough. Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. Administrative reports. Mr. Kelly, would you like to kickstart?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Mr. Hatton, could you come up and give the quarterly report, please, sir? Before I get started, dear, thank you very much for the kind words, but Mr. David Kelly was very, very heavily involved in it. It's not just me. I'm his wingman, he's the... All right, as you well know, it's the end of March, and we've got three more months. We're starting to get heavily into the budget cycle, so I wanted to just run over some of the numbers that we have, and we'll be looking at again over the next two or three weeks. Avalorum tax collection so far this year, $7,443,000, and that's 97.5% of our collection rate. I estimate that we'll probably get another $50,000 in over the next three months, and we'll reach our 98% collection rate that we budget for, that I expect. Option sale, local option sales tax, this one gets me. We have collected $2,465,000 through March. This time last year, losing my voice, we collected $1,970,000. Very big increase, as we've said before. The winter season of Oak Island doesn't seem to be a winter season anymore. It's not the off, it's just, they're starting to level out with this kind of growth. You can see that, you know, knock on wood, it's been good weather, and we hope it keeps on that way. Water utility revenue, we have collected $3,099,000. This time last year, same period, we collected $2,791,000. So the housing starts, and all the housing that everybody in the audience can see is starting to pay off, and we're collecting. Sewer utility revenue, again, this year is $3,740,000. This time last year, it was $3,647,000. So still growth in that area. Tap fees, $352,000, and that's just from all the building and growth on the island. Sewer district fee, we've collected $6,683,000, and that pays the debt of the wastewater system. That's all that money goes for. Commodities tax, this is really a good news... a good news story on this one. So far, we have collected two million, this is on the 3%, $2,195,000. This time last year, at the end of March, we'd collected $1,450,000. People are here, as we all know. Obviously, these are showing it. The 2%, we've collected $1,463, this time last year, $967,000. So, strong. Let's hope, you know, no hurricanes or disasters or recessions or anything, because, you know, we're all seeing this growth on this island, and it's just showing that we have exactly, the mayor, knock on wood. And as you will, and as you know, we're doing the beach project on the West End, so we are drawing the money from the special obligation bonds, and that is funding those, that money that we're paying to Great Lakes until I get the money back in from FEMA. So, we are using those funds. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Scott Thornhall, you want to give us a quick update on Public Works?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give you a quick update. I know that the season is upon us, so I want to give an update on our accesses. We've been rehabbing, sprucing up the accesses. We started at McGlamry and started working west. Pretty much all the way through, the West End's been kind of a hopscotch because of the sand project. We've got stay off the dune signs at all of them. Now, some of the ones on the West End that haven't been punched through yet, there's only one on the access side. So once that gets done, then we'll install one on the beach side, as well as the identifier signs, so people walking the beach know where to get off. Other than that, we're straightening bumpers, grading, adding stone, just, just a basic spruce up. Shower towers, we've got the one at McGlamry installed, we've got the one out here at Splash Pad installed. Barbie Boulevard access was prepped today, it'll be installed tomorrow, and then they're moving to the West End parking lot. And the reason those were picked first is because they already had water access, so it was a much simpler process. Now, leave one more that will possibly to Cabana, maybe around 801. We'll, we'll get with Mr. Kelly, and we'll decide which way that goes. The biggest thing about the stay off the dune signs, there's going to be several. We've got the straight up and down, and then we've got the camada that also is going to say stay off the dunes. So there'll be multiple signs out there, because we all know it is an issue. Other than that, like I say, we'll be getting them all done by the time, once the sand projects finish, we'll have them all, we'll be right behind them. So, all look good for the season.
Mr. Thornhall, when will the posting ropes be placed in the accesses that don't yet have them?
The contractor's going to be here Monday, and they're going to start and be here until they complete them all.
Excellent. Thank you. And is there any update on the 20th Street walkover in terms of the repairs?
We are going to put, I'm sorry. We are going to go ahead and install a solar light where the electrical one used to be, and do some general maintenance. I mean, it's kind of aged woods, so there's only, kind of limited, but we'll make sure that's, I walked it today. It's safe, but there are a few things that we can do to make it a little better.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thanks for all you do, and.
Moby mat locations?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Moby mats right now, of course, the West End, we don't have any out yet, because 10th and 57th are still waiting to be completed. We've got them at Wumble, Southeast 74th, and Southeast 25th right now. And then, we're going to start putting out some more here shortly, and I'll let Mike know immediately so he can get it all out to the public.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. A little bit about the sand project. We had the update meeting this afternoon. Like you said, they should be here next week. Started working on the posting ropes. They have all the temporary ones placed up to the, where they are located at currently. They do have one dredge pumping now. They gave us another pushback date today. Looks like now they'll be completed by the 20th, place in the sand, and then they have till the end of the month to get all the equipment off the beach. They asked us today, we had advertised the Third Place East access to be used for a removal of all their equipment. Then today, at their meeting at 2:00, they decided they wanted to start looking at using 51st Street on the West End, because we kept telling them Third Street was going to be very busy, and they have realized Third Street is very busy. So we're going to discuss that with the engineer when we leave here tonight, give him a call to see what we can tell them in the morning about that. Scott gave the update about the sayings we do, I mean, the signs, we do have those going in. So the project, looks like it will be completed by the end of April. All the agencies reminded everybody about our permit, turtle season, those kind of things. April 1st, we started $5,000 day damages, because they had not finished on time, so that's still in place, and that continues up until the end of the project. So there is some gains and losses that we've done. We've added some sand here and had to leave some sand in certain places, but at the end of it, it'll be the same amount of sand that we planned on putting out there, is going to be the same volume of sand that we placed on the beach. So that's the good news. As far as Beach Patrol, we had one UTV that was down. I reckon they're making this special park, because it seems like this is a park that everybody needs. We also have Skip's unit down, too. So there's things being done. We're going to start renting one, probably from a local retailer here, so we can get the other ones out on the beach. And we'll probably go ahead and rent two of those for the rest of the summer, for the season, so we can have three available, so we can get more people out there onto the beach. Setting up interviews for the Beach Patrol for the civilian side. Right now, as you know, we're still three people short on the police patrol, and we didn't want to continue to have to have them working their days off on the Beach Patrol, so we're trying to put more of the civilian. We put that $17.50 on the signs out there on the street, and we had plenty of people volunteering, but they weren't volunteering. They said, yes, we'll take the $17.50. We offered volunteering, but they didn't sign up for that one. So we'll be looking at doing a paid Beach Patrol for the season. So that'll be going on sidewalks, Councilman Bach referred to. We had broken down into two phases last year. The first phase was going from 50, or the public's red light, 51st or 50th Street, whatever that is, all the way to 58. There's areas there that have parking lots, the old CIS thrift store, the pool repair, all those have sort of limited means of address anyway. So we're having to go with DOT to try to work in driveways for those, because they won't just leave blacktop all the way across the front. As you notice, on the other side of the road, we had to go in and put in little driveway sections on the other side. There used to be grass in between it, but mainly it's driven over now, and those kind of things. But working with DOT on that, so we're going to flip things. We're going to start at the ABC store, because they make money for us, and put a sidewalk from there to Town Hall. Not saying a lot of Town Hall people visit there, but that, that is, that's the grassy area that's going to be the easiest for us to get in. But that, that is something that we looked at. Councilman Bach brought that up to us. Scott and Stormwater have a little rough drawing showing what we need. They're going to go out and start taking some measurements, and then we can get the engineering firm to go ahead and revise the drawings and, and work with DOT that way, and that'll give us more time to work with DOT for the other accesses. The restaurant, Old Russell's that opened up, you know how that parking dumps right onto the road? The other place right next to it is getting ready to open up, so there's all kinds of restrictions that are coming upon us that we need to make sure that we can keep the people from getting backed over when they're on the sidewalks. Did I cover everything, Mr. Bach?
Oh, there's one more thing. Thank you. Please convey my appreciation to Lisa. The Pier Complex 801 report is extraordinary. She is booked through November. There are 30 weddings. Now, when we launched this project, the conception was if it didn't break even or return revenue, we were going to sell it again. Then the pandemic hit. There was to be a revised business plan, which unfortunately was created and then rendered moot by the pandemic. I would like to make sure that we get a new plan, and we give her everything she needs, because she's doing an extraordinary job. And one of the calculations back of the envelope that we made was, over the course of a year, you probably need 65 or 70 weddings, and weddings for the moneymaker and other events, and she is on a course to do that. So my compliments to her. I'd like to see the new business plan, and I'd like to furnish her what she needs to do even better. This is really extraordinary. So I don't know if everyone saw this, but impressive work. My compliments.
And we'll let her know, and she's actually one of the first ones that come in front of y'all Thursday, so she'll be here so y'all can talk to her.
Thank you.
The last thing I have, if the gentleman is still here in the back of the room, sitting in the back, I recognize what police do. Our new police chief, you want to come up for a minute, sir?
It's like Baptists at church.
Well, he said he's going to go meet them all, so we'll see.
For the Catholics.
He won't be sitting back there long.
Who's the gentleman in the corner?
Thank you, sir.
He is our new police chief. He comes to us retired from the State Bureau of Investigation as a supervisor. I don't know how many years that was. I ain't going to make him say how many years. But he's been married for 25 years, got a daughter. He's lived in western North Carolina all his life, and now he has made Oak Island his home. He came here, he started yesterday, moved here last week, and would you like to say a little bit about yourself?
I can if you wish.
All right. He's going to talk a long time, so we'll just feed the hook. But he, he's a person that, the reason why we went after him, and the reason why we found him, and the reason why he's here today, he's a community person. And the first thing he said, he just wanted to serve the community. And he only applied one place, and that was us. And it worked out well for us that he did apply for us. We've talked to him many an hour, and everything he says is something that we want to put forward in the community, and he's ready to go to work, and we're ready for him to go to work. He doesn't have a uniform yet, sorry about that, but he, he doesn't even have all his paperwork finished yet. Raleigh's still working on a few things, but he, he's ready to go for us, and we, we're glad he's here.
Thank you for those kind words, Mr. Kelly. Madam Mayor, Counsel, thank you guys tonight. It certainly is a true honor and a lifelong goal of mine to, to be selected as the police chief here. My wife and I have lived in western North Carolina. I've lived in western North Carolina my entire life, and once I retired from the SBI, you know, we, we looked at, we've been watching Oak Island for a very long time, and the timing here was just, just perfect. So I want to thank Mr. Kelly especially, you know, for giving me this opportunity and to move forward and to serve this community. So as Mr. Kelly said, I started yesterday, and I have started meeting the police officers. I've started meeting, meeting the administrative staff at the town, and I want to tell you that it's some of the most professional people that I've had the opportunity to work with. I'm so pleased to work with a, a group of professionals like this that care about the community and want to, and want to do the right thing. So, and moving over to the Police Department, that's some of the most dedicated officers that, that I have spoken to that want to serve the community. So we already have several initiatives that we are working on. Some of the officers have brought forth some excellent ideas, you know, for the Police Department to integrate ourselves in with the community, and that's, that's the, a very strong initiative that we are going to work towards, you know, over the next, over the next six months as we put together our plan. But as Mr. Kelly says, I've got plenty to say, but it's getting late, and I'll, I'll keep it, I'll keep it short tonight. But if someone wants to speak to the police chief, I, I welcome you to speak with me. If you have an issue, please, please let me know. I want to help. I want to serve this community. I want to build and maintain strong relationships with the Police Department and the community and throughout the town, and I, I look forward to many great things coming out of the Police Department, and I'm so blessed to be part of this, part of this awesome team right now. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yes, sir.
Chief, did you, did you say that you and your wife have been looking at Oak Island for a long time, or the SBI had been looking at?
Well, we, we'll talk about that after, after the, the meeting here.
Welcome aboard, sir.
No, that's right. Thank you so much, sir.
The word on the street is that, that you need a special deal on donuts. I think I can help you with that.
I'm, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to be honest with you. So the last three weeks that I've had, I lived in the same house for 26 years, and it's been a scramble to get that house ready, paint, get it ready, and I have lost so much weight over the last two weeks. I didn't want to lose the weight that way, so I will take you up on those donuts. And it doesn't matter what kind they are. You just let me know.
Chief, I just want to extend a very warm welcome on behalf of Counsel, and we look forward to a long and prosperous relationship. So thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, and I look forward to the long relationship as well, and it, hopefully, it, it will last an extended period of time and where we can become part of this community. My wife is excited to become part of the community, and so we're, we're here. And we've got a house rented for six months, though. We got a house rented for six months on the island. So we will, in the near future, be searching for a permanent residence, and hopefully, it's on, on the island. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
The last thing, Mayor. We had a, we had a manager's meeting last week, first one we've been able to have since COVID. We had 16 different municipalities present, and the biggest thing is, is police. No one can find them, no one can hire them, those kind of things. The second one was Development Services or Building Inspection. Steve knows that, because we've been searching for a grade two there for a long time, and now we're out looking for a planner. The big things were the cost of living, as you've been seeing circulating. The 15 to 16 towns, all of them are implementing the COLA as written, so that is something that we'll be bringing forward as well. They were talking about retaining employees, the benefits, and those kind of things, holding a steady line, because I know you saw the report last week from Wilmington. Wilmington's playing catch-up on theirs, because they didn't give anybody nothing for a while. So they, they having to be catch-up with theirs. We have on Thursday our first budget workshop, so we'll be going over some several things there, talking about the staff in the future, capital projects, capital funding, and start getting into the, sort of the line items or the nuts and bolts of the budget going forward. So we look forward to bringing that to you and live streaming and that for people to be able to watch it and bring any ideas forward, even at the May meeting. It's not the public hearing on the budget, but it's open for public comment. So if they see something during April that they want to say, they can say it at the May meeting as well. They don't have to wait till June to be able to bring that forward. That's my report.
Excellent. Good to know. Thank you. Mr. Eads?
I think they've heard my voice enough tonight, Madam Mayor. I don't have any more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving to old business, consideration of commissioning an audit of the town's UDO. Mr. Bach?
Yes, this was on last month's agenda as a discussion item, but I think that as a result of the informal conversations that we've had between and among council members and also with management, and the clear and, and precise recommendation from the Planning Board for some time now that we audit the, the UDO, which is almost six years old, and there are emerging concerns about elements within it as we encounter rapid growth, particularly on the mainland. So this island, this item has been re-conditioned as an action item, and Lisa has obtained from Wes, who is our local government affairs director for the COG, a scope of work outlining procedures that he would follow to create the initial audit recommendations. The only thing that I would add to the discussion here is that I would hope that the report, when it is generated, presuming that we approve it, would tier the results to most important, most critical, highest risk, to least, because there will undoubtedly be a lot of recommendations. I will also say that next month, we'll also take up the list of items which came from the Planning Board, so hopefully, they will be integrated as part of the same look at the UDO and where we need to go. So with that said, the, the specifications for scope of work are there. The cost is indicated. There's discussion, kindly, would you entertain it, Madam Mayor?
Any comments from Council?
I'm very much in favor of it.
Yeah, there was a change to some of the wording for the scope of work. I just want to point that out, and if Mr. Kelly would like to clarify the change in the scope of work, I would be grateful for that.
Yes, there was some scribbling that we done the other day during the two-on-twos. The only thing that needed to change was the COG with purpose. Let me read this, because we wrote it backwards two or three times. Unless Lisa wrote it down the other day when we were talking about?
I have it here, if you need it.
Oh.
Start the second paragraph.
Yes, sir.
As part of the UDO update process, we propose to work with the planning board to conduct facilitated meetings for review of the current UDO and the applicable general code section. We anticipate this task will take three to four meetings. As such, as part of the proposed scope of work, COG, instead of the word we, will staff up to four meetings with the planning board and other advisory boards as part of the audit. I believe that is what we discussed that day, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, sir. Basically, you're wanting to make sure that the COG was the one doing the discussions?
Right. In the first, the first part, though, Bill, we discussed that COG would conduct facilitated meetings with planning board and other advisory boards.
I just read that.
Sort of did.
Okay. It's 8:45.
Just for clarification for other council members, we just wanted to make sure...
I was just going to say that I did communicate this to Mr. McLeod, and he said he would be fine with that, and that he could incorporate that language into the contract.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, we did ask Wes, so.
Excellent. I think the tiered results is a good recommendation.
That should be added, I believe.
And I'm also very excited to be able to address the UDO, particularly collecting input from multiple committees and, and boards for things that need to be done. Not in this contract, however, but we've not addressed our, or reviewed our land use plan, which is a companion piece, if you will, to the UDO, and that's not been done, I think, since 2017. So it's time for that as well, and I look forward to reviewing that document once we get done with the work on the UDO, which is no small task. Any other comments?
Do we have the suggested changes to the scope of work?
Yes, sir. We'd already talked about it with Wes already, but
Right.
We'll make sure he gets the scope of work and signs off on it.
Do anyone like to make...
Wait a motion.
Yes. Does anyone like to make a motion?
I'm happy to, if Mr. Bach does not...
You may, sir, and I, I don't want to make my own motion here.
I, I respect that. I make a motion to contract with the Cape Fear Council of Governments to perform an audit of the town's UDO as described in the provided scope of work in an amount not to exceed $12,000, and authorize the town manager to execute the contract.
And I'll second with the proviso that the report be tiered, and the necessary language changes, which Mr. Martin and yourself have been, be included.
The final form of the contract, subject to town attorney review, because I haven't seen it yet.
As always.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Is there a second for that motion?
Not with all the news.
In favor?
John seconded it.
Oh, great. Yes. I'm sorry. It is late.
While you're working?
All in favor. Excellent. Thank you. It's unanimous. Last, last order of business is confirmation of council consensus for option one in the funding beach renourishment. This is outlined in the packet, and as was pointed out earlier, the numbers in option one, which was passed by a unanimous consensus at council in the last meeting, the numbers, in fact, will change, because they're projections as to the revenue that the town will take in up to the point where we're actually putting sand on the beach. I think it's important to recognize there are other things that will happen as well, storms, and growth, and other things that will impact. I think the idea is to take as little money from the general fund as possible when all is said and done. I think that's really important in order to minimize risk. And I would like for us tonight to take action to confirm the consensus that, that we had at the last meeting. And of course, all of this is pending change. We do have another election coming up where council members will change, but I think it's important at this point in time to have this council's intent to be codified, and hopefully the new council members will, will agree. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to reaffirm option one as presented at the March 22, 2022 Special Town Council meeting, as the funding mechanism to generate the 20 million in matching funds
That's right.
To a beach renourishment project.
It does say $20. So I'm glad you added the million.
Martin, Mr. Craft, would you like the honor of seconding this, since it is your claim?
I'll second.
All in favor? Excellent. That's unanimous. No new business tonight, and there is no closed session. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
And is there a second? Excellent. All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience. Great meeting. Got a lot done.